Pia Chairman Stratford Town Council, today is June 8th, 2020 at 6:17 PM. Margot Paquette will be the Recording Secretary and I'd like to thank a couple of the councilors that are on the call. Mr. Van Deck, I have from Administration, Dave Wright running as well from, hi Caitlin. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Yep, Margot Caitlin just joined.
Yep, got her.
Excellent. So we're going to call it to order and we'll call the public comment in order that we've had people log on. So I believe, Margot, I think Tammy was first.
Yeah, Tammy, and if you would give your name and address and/or the organization that you're representing for the record.
Thank you.
Okay, I sure will. My name is Tammy Chojniewski. I reside at 15 Elizabeth Street in Stratford and serve as the town's Administrator of Community Services located at the Birdseye Municipal Complex, 468 Birdseye Street. Chairman Pia and council members, thank you for the opportunity to comment tonight. I will begin with the Community Development Block Grant Funding. I'm expressing my support for the Public Services Funding for the South End Community Center, which provides crucial funding to keep the center open. During the pandemic, the South End Community Center has provided essential services without interruption, including free tax preparation for residents qualifying for the IRS FIDA program, is one of the five distribution sites for bag lunches and breakfast for schoolchildren, and is providing weekly pantry services. And now they're scrambling to plan for the safe operation for summer safari for K to six children. I'm also supporting the planning and administration funding to the South End to conduct a feasibility study regarding the expansion of the center by building a second floor. The study includes a structural analysis, architectural design, and a building cost estimate. Over the years, residents and community leaders have requested the expansion of the center, and this is the first step toward determining if building a second story is indeed possible. Regarding the proposed CDBG CV Cares Act allocation, I'm also voicing my support for the recommendations, which reflect a coordinated approach. The town's proposal involving multiple departments and the public schools is developed based on the preliminary findings of Stratford Strong. This new task force specifically created to respond to the COVID-19 crisis is coordinating community recovery with a focus on identifying the needs of low, moderate income residents and leveraging financial and volunteer resources to meet those needs. Specifically funds will allow the Community and Economic Development Department to increase a part-time position to full-time to support the activities of Stratford Strong. Responsibilities include handling communication, coordinating programs and services, strengthening collaboration across diverse sectors, and managing volunteer and financial resources to respond to need. Senior Services will implement a new frozen meal delivery program to replace the congregate meal program. A contract will be executed with a qualified food vendor. A new halftime case manager will oversee meal delivery and provide case management services. Hours will be added to one of the part-time drivers for delivery. New funds will also be added to the Stratford Fuel Bank administered by Senior Services to help low, moderate income households with utility bills. At the South End Community Center, a part-time position will also be expanded to full-time to scale up the food pantry operated by the South End Community Council to meet the increasing demand from low income, low, moderate income households. Hours will be added to a part-time driver to pick up donations and purchases. New funds will be used to purchase more food to stock the pantry so that no household is turned away. Purchases will include fresh produce, dairy products, and eggs to provide adequate nutrition that boxed and canned foods alone cannot. The Health Department will purchase two N95 mask fit test training kits that will be used to ensure proper use by medical reserve corps volunteers during the COVID-19 birdseye vaccination clinics. School nurses will also be trained so that they can safely work with students when they return to school buildings. During the summer recess from school, Stratford Public Schools staff will conduct outreach services for low income, low, moderate income families of K to two students. Data shows that eight to 10% of students not engaging in distance learning are at the elementary level. Staff will reengage students and their families by directing families to community and district resources with warm handoff referrals, providing COVID-19 prevention education and supporting learning at home to mitigate summer learning loss. From day one of the COVID-19 crisis, town departments, the public schools, Sterling House Community Center, the Stratford Y, and other community partners have come together as a community safety net. This additional funding further strengthens our capacity to be there for all of our neighbors as our community continues to safely reopen. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tammy. We appreciate it and all, I know I speak on behalf of all of us on the council. We, every, all the work you guys do is awesome. So thank you again for your stick. Margot, the next person?
Next up is Kevin Clemney, and Kevin, if you could state your name, address, and whatever organization you might be representing.
Sure, I'm Kevin Clemme, and I'm with the Stratford Public Schools. And so I have an office at 1,000 East Broadway there in Stratford. And I'm calling in to speak in favor of the allocations as they've been proposed and to thank the council and the committee for the important job that you've done here. On behalf of the Stratford Public Schools, I wanted to express our gratitude for your consideration of these requests and emphasize that these funds will support important renovations and outreach to serve many of Stratford's low-income students and their families. In particular, for the regular CDBG funds, the proposed playground renovations at Franklin School, that playground is used by students and community families, but it has notable safety, drainage, and access issues. And these funds will allow us to put up a new swing set that provides access, resurface the playground, improve the drainage, create a walking path for members of the community to use from the street to the playground, and resaw the entire area. The CDBG CV funds would go to, as Tammy has already mentioned, reach out to the eight to 10% of elementary school students who have become significantly disengaged from school during the COVID-19 pandemic. And in fact, on the South End, it's even worse. Where there were at 15 to 20% of the students and their families have become disengaged from the schools. And the funds would pay for teachers and social workers to reach out and prepare students for the fall. So thank you for your consideration and for the important work you're doing. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but I think it's just a testimony, so.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you very much for representing the schools and happy you're testimony. Thank you, sir. Margot, back to you.
Okay, Chelsea Cordiak, and if you would, please state your name, address, and the organization that you're representing if that applies.
Thank you so much. My name is Chelsea Cordiak. I am representing the Stratford YMCA, which is located at 3045 Main Street. And thank you so much, first of all, to Chairman Pia as well as the council members tonight. And I would also like to thank Tammy for all of her hard work in bringing together Stratford Strong. And the Y is extremely honored to be a part of this organization and this community of collaborators. So just a huge thank you to everyone who's collaborated through this entire, through the last three months. In March of 2020, the COVID-19 global pandemic began impacting the Y and the way that we operate, especially delivering programs and impacting members of our community. The Stratford Y is used to daily before and after-school programs, early learners in the pre-K classroom, and members of all ages coming through our doors for social as well as physical exercise. And due to the closure recommended by the State of Connecticut, we chose to close our doors as well. But we pivoted our services and continued to serve the community in new ways. Our school-age childcare provided, as well as preschool, provided virtual supports and enrichment for our youth. Our staff spent countless hours on the phone checking in with members. We've collected over 1,300 pounds of food, most recently to go to Sterling House and South End Community Center. So we are extremely grateful to be a part of this community and to be considered for CDBG funding. Our ask for CDBG CV funding was to support our childcare program because we know that in order for parents to go back to work, we need to ramp up our ability to give full and partial scholarships for preschool, camp, and childcare. We know that in our programs, children develop independence. They develop socially and they stay connected, especially throughout the summer, through our literacy and STEM programming. We already give financial aid to about 35% of our participants in our childcare programs, and we know that that need is going to grow as the economic impacts of COVID-19 become more real in our community. We have requested funds to supplement the scholarships that we already give, and we've also asked for funding to help us better present in our virtual classrooms that we started only three short months ago. And so we, organizations across town have already let us know that they're accessing our resources, including Strive, Parents Place, and Flashing Class. So we are proud to share that, those resources, but we could use some improved equipment so to improve our ability to bring that programming to a wider audience. The CDBG funding that we originally applied for this year was for an outdoor fitness zone to increase the opportunity for our neighbors to take advantage of our facility and meet low and moderate income Stratford residents where they are. We are literally hoping to build a small workout zone outside that can be used by folks in the community as they're walking by, as well as by folks in our programs. This would be one step towards building the future of the Stratford Y as an inclusive neighborhood asset on Main Street. We've been here since 1964, and we're committed to staying engaged in the community, and we are grateful for any support that you're able to give us. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Chelsea. I know I say on behalf of all of us, thank you for all, everything you guys do at the Y. It's a wonderful place. So thank you again. Margot, I have, I believe someone, Amanda just joined who would like to speak.
Yep, Amanda, are you there?
I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes, if you could state your name and the organization that you're representing for the record.
Yes, Amanda Meeson, Sterling House Community Center, 2283 Main Street, Stratford. So I echo so much of what my partner said, and certainly Chelsea. Thank you to Chairman Pia. Thank you to the council. We miss you all so much. Although it's been so disconnected, collaboration has been stronger than ever. I also echo Tammy's, that Tammy is so much of the reason for that. She's an incredible collaborator and partnership and partner. And this disproposal and this support for the town is a great example of that. So everyone knows, you know, we all halted programs and services to the community in any sort of recreational way. And the Sterling House model, those each make a little bit of money so that we can have an expanded resource connection. And so when everything shut down, our food pantry and resource connection kicked into overdrive and has doubled, even tripled in some of the service numbers we've been seeing since COVID began. This funding is really in two parts. The first part is to be able to continue the current capacity that we have and potentially grow for what will be needed, we think, for months to come. We have not seen the pantry slow down yet, and we are up to 100 deliveries a month from 12, which was our pre-COVID number. And so that is, and that's homebound seniors predominantly, 100 patrons visiting a week and about 5,000 meals a week, in addition to about 75 Stratford kids coming every day for lunch. So while much of the house has been quiet, this part has been lights on and really rewarding, and we were, have been grateful to be able to be here during this time. So this, this funding is really to help us continue this scale. There's support salaries there. A lot of the referral is happening with our town partners. A lot of the coordination internally needed additional administrative support in addition to our deliveries and drivers and food packing and coordination there. The second part is very similar to what Chelsea mentioned and is in partnership with the Y and with South End that we anticipate these kind of childcare safety funds, safety net funds being needed. We also offer scholarships to our programs, but know that families are going to have to make tough decisions on returning to care and work and want to be able to make that easier for them to know that they can send their child to a safe place, a healthy place that where we're taking these protocols very seriously. So some of that, those safety nets are for camp and some are for preschool and after-school as we see the effects of this continue through the school year. Again, it's been a proud, proud time to live here. Excited to be on Stratford Strong as well, and thank you all to the CDBG Committee, to our town council, to the mayor, and to all the departments for the incredible support and collaboration. It's really been a silver lining in all this. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Awesome work, awesome job. Hope you and the family are well. All right.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I know one other caller just joined. I just wanted to make sure I give the opportunity.
Yes, it's Ty Schen from the South End.
I'm sorry. Can you state your name?
It's Ty.
Ty, Ty?
Yes.
Hi, Ty. It's Chris P. How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good, good. Would you like the opportunities to speak for the public hearing?
Sure, just a few minutes if I could.
Yep, we got about, go ahead. We got about 12 minutes left, so go ahead.
All right. Thank you, guys. I'm sorry I'm getting on late here. I just actually was leaving the center and had something else to do, but I just want to say thank you so much for honoring our application this year. You guys know what's going on, and we're still trudging along. And we're just so grateful that we were able to get our allocation for our center operations as well as get the money that are needed for a feasibility study to be done to look at space here at the center. And with the virus and everything that's been going on, we've been pushing along, feeding people. And just today, we had churches from town show up, just dropping off everything that, you know, we've been kind of requesting to help us service the kids that are coming in for lunch, their families, the seniors, just everybody working together has been amazing. And it's making it a little bit easier for us as we prepare for summer programs to start on July 6. It makes us all happy to know that we have the support of the council as usual, and this funding will continue to help us, you know, work with the families that we service. So I just want to say thank you guys so much. And on this virtual call, you can't even see how hard I'm smiling right now just to know that, you know, we are progressively moving forward. We will continue to meet needs and we'll continue to be able to develop programs that'll be able to help not just those in the South End, but families all across Stratford that are in need. So thanks so much, you guys.
Ty, thank you. Appreciate everything you guys, you guys do. Wonderful, wonderful part of the community. So thank you again. Anyone else? All right, Margot, I don't believe I have anybody else on the list. Is that correct?
I don't have anybody on my list, no.
All right.
Councilman P., may I say a word?
Sure, go ahead. Well, go ahead.
Not stealing your thunder, but adding to it. Councilman Cannon expresses his apologies for not being on the public hearing for the cares and the CDBG, but he just wanted to extend his appreciation for all of us involved, as do I. This is one of the things that I enjoy being on the council that we're all in agreement with is that once we help those who need a handout, it makes us stronger. And, you know, throughout my 60 years, when I was a little boy, I came up through Sterling House and the Y. And now in this situation, to be partnering with you all, giving back, this is, this is the joy in that we're still helping out fellow Stratfordites. This, this is, this is what, this to me is what it's all about. So I certainly appreciate working with all of you in this regard, and thank you all for the work that you do to make Stratford a better place.
Well said, Paul. Thank you. Well said. All right, hearing no others. I'm going to close the public hearing on June 8th at 6:30 PM. And for, just for a point of reference for anyone just listening for a council order, it is 6:46. Margot, if you'd like to start with the first name on the list.
Yep, Paul Taveras, if you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Go ahead, Paul.
Thank you, Margot. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Paul Taveras, 1372 South Avenue, Stratford. I wanted to just express my sincere dismay about the defunding of the Splash Park. The $392,000 was defunded, and this was something that I had really would have liked to have come to fruition. I even talked with the mayor last year about it, and she even had expressed her same desire that she wanted to see this through. And the fact that it's not going to happen is just very much disappointing and for me to have to let folks know, not just in District 3, but this was, would be for, would have been for all Stratfordites. I support any kind of venue, especially when it benefits youth. You know, I see $750,000 for tennis courts. I like tennis, but it seems like, you know, things like that seem to be able to be promoted and going through. So it's just something that weighed heavily with me, and I'm hoping that at some point before I leave this earth that something like that will be established. But again, I'd like to work with all of you all to make sure that there are amenable and equitable facilities in our districts. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Next, Margot, on your list?
Yep, the next speaker is Barbara Heimlich. Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Barbara Heimlich, 91 College Street. On Wednesday, the zoning commission has scheduled a special meeting to hear a petition on the proposed apartment complex slated for 2000 to 2019 Main Street by 21 South Avenue LLC, which is Cali Nagy Properties. And they are seeking a special case and site plan review approval to construct a 96-unit housing development and a six-unit housing development. I have contacted members of the zoning commission to object to the six-unit housing development that, according to the papers filed with zoning, would result in the demolition of the structure located in 2019. That is the Lily Deveraux Blake House, an important part of Stratford's history. It was built in 1856 by Lily Deveraux Blake's mother, Sarah Elizabeth Johnson Deveraux. It sits on what was part of the William Samuel Johnson Estate and called Elm Cottage. The house is an American Carpenter Gothic. Most American Carpenter Gothic structures are listed on the National Register of Historic Places, which may help to ensure their preservation. Many, though, are not listed, and those in urban areas are endangered by the increased value of the land they occupy. Apparently, this is the case in Stratford. I want to raise awareness with the council that the plan to destroy a structure with such historical significance to Stratford will further erode the colonial and historical identity that we have always proudly advertised to increase our visibility as a tourist attraction to encourage real estate investment for both residential and commercial. Hopefully, the town of Stratford will look into the future of 2019 Main Street and work with the developers to preserve a part of our history. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Barbara. Any other callers that were not previously identified that would like to speak at the public hearing? Any other callers? Okay, I don't hear any, Margot, unless you have no, you don't have any other on your list, correct?
I do not.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing on June 8th, 2020 at 6:50 PM. And to council, point of, point of reference just to councilors and callers listening, this will be the same line, the same login for the 8 PM scheduled meeting. I would ask that everyone just kindly mute themselves, or David, you can do a master mute, please, across the board. I'd appreciate that. Meeting took order. My name is Chris P. 8:07 PM on June 8th, 2020. Thank you all for attending this evening. The first line item would be the invocation and pledge, and I'm going to ask Councilor Harden to please do the honors. Dave, you're on mute. I see you on mute, Dave, FYI. Can you hear me?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, I got you, Dave. I was calling, I'm recognizing you for the invocation and pledge, sir.
Okay. Most gracious and heavenly Father, we thank you for an opportunity to come together as a community in spite of all the tension and the discoil that's going on in our nation, and not only in our nation and locally. We bless those who have fought the good fight and who have continued to walk the path of fairness and being equal and being unbiased. We also send prayers to the families of victims of COVID, and we send prayers to the families of victims of violence, violence of racism, violence of hate. And we ask that you bless our town and that you bless our town officials. And we thank you for our mayor who has taken the step to make sure that the departments and the police department and everyone works together for the good of the town, and not only the good of the town, but the good of the residents and, you know, other people. So we ask that you pray that you give us strength to get through the day and ask that you, that we pray to give us strength through the council meeting and that we work well together. And these things we pray, amen. A pleasure legion to the flag of United States of America. Until Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God. In the visual, with liberty and justice for all. I hope that you can still hear me.
Yes, we can, Dave. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And on behalf of myself, the council, you know, I was going to say a remark, but I think that blessing really hits the nail on the head about equalities for everyone in light what's going on in the world. You know, we have a very special, special place in keeping that, keeping up with the way that we business and most of the way we live and treat other people here is the most important thing and why we do what we do. Thank you, Dave. Great words. Well said. All right. With that, back to the agenda. First item of order, excuse me, first item of agenda is the approval of minutes for the regularly scheduled for the meeting of May 11th and a special on May 20th. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
This is Laura Dancho, District 10, motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Dancho.
Second by Dave Harden.
I heard Dave's, I heard second. Okay, any discussion? Okay, Margot, call, roll call vote, please, on that.
This is Margot Paquette, Council Clerk. This is the roll call vote for agenda item one. Ms. Shake?
Yes.
Mr. Taveras?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Khan? Mr. Khan? Mr. Poison?
Yes.
Mr. Perrow?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Dancho?
Yes.
Mr. Pia?
I vote, cheer vote, Ty.
That's a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. Paquette. Just point of clarity, Greg, I am, I'm going to work with you on this 100%. I, I just noticed you're the only one that had a slight delay from when you said it. So I'm going to, I'm going to give and make sure Margot and I know that, just going forward with your audio, okay?
Thank you. Thanks, Chris.
Okay. All right. So next item on the agenda, Mayor's report, 4.1, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council Chair. For the COVID-19 updates, all departments in Stratford are actively monitoring the coronavirus and the outbreak. We are in regular contact with the state and federal agencies. Local officials are remaining up to date on guidance from the Federal Centers of Disease Control, the Department of Public Safety, Department of Public Health, and we've been working in concert with the state departments and the Centers for Disease Control in the Governor's Office. The town buildings are closed, town departments- The town buildings are closed. Town departments continue to operate and provide services to our community. Employees are operating on an A B schedule in the office and teleworking on the off days. On Monday, June fifteenth, all employees will report to their respective offices to begin a regular work schedule. The Health Department is in its sixteenth operational period of responding to COVID nineteen. In Connecticut, there have been forty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty confirmed cases and four thousand seventy-one deaths. As of today, in Stratford, we have eight hundred and thirty-seven cases, which is a combination of laboratory confirmed and probable cases, forty-seven deaths. The probable cases have effectively brought us up over a hundred cases as determined, because now the probable cases, though not laboratory confirmed, are now in the todes. Seventy-two percent of the deaths have occurred in Stratford are due to do clients who have lived in assisted living or nursing care facilities. The department, the Health Department, continues to monitor the health status of the town and has begun using the contact C T tracing from Microsoft software obtained from Connecticut D P H. The Health Department is one of twenty in the beta tester that has the state's plan for contract tracing. Optimists will hold pop-up testing at four locations, Franklin School, Southern Community Center, Bird's Eye Municipal Building, and the Stratford Housing Authority. P P is being distributed to home health providers and dentists from the, from the Health Department. For the past twelve weeks, Sedesco has been, uh, been providing bag lunches with the addition of breakfast uh, for a majority of those weeks. More than twenty-five thousand bag lunches and breakfasts have been distributed in five sites at Mitchell School, Franklin School, Johnson House, Sterling House, and Southern Community Center. The senior services distributor, uh, over a hundred and twenty senior grocery bags per week with fresh produce and dairy staples, and the Stratford Housing Authority has distributed three hundred and fifty per week for seniors and disabled residents. Economic Development continues to work with the businesses on the social distancing protocols and the reopen C T plans. Currently, twenty-eight restaurants have successfully opened outside dining after May twentieth. Phase two plans have been announced by, and the Economic and Community Development Departments will work with the Health Department on the implementation. Brian Lampard, Andrea Bosman, and Joe McNeil continue to work together on the enforcement of all the executive orders. For public safety, our first responders consider, continue to service and protect Stratford. Those that have been working have adequate P P E, masks, gloves, uh, sanitary supplies to keep them in compliance. We have a good supply of P P E. Community support remains high with donations of P P E and food donations. They're working under Larry Ciccarelli, Public Safety Director, on a thirty, sixty, ninety-plus days operation for planning, reopening schools, and providing P P E to businesses and to the public. They're also providing training visi, videos and the shop showing the proper use of P P E. Construction has been ongoing on the Huntington Road Firehouse with the second floor renovation, and the H A H V A C project at the Stratford Fire Station, uh, I'm sorry, Lordship Fire Station is scheduled to begin shortly. The community is rallying to support one another in the manner that is truly reflective of Stratford. Donations of food, P P E, masks, and offer to help have been pouring in from anyone who wants it. The community has also rallied behind the B L M movement, hosting a peaceful town rally on the Green on May and a vigil last Friday at the First Baptist Church. Several council members participated in both. The Stratford Police Department recognizes that they have been doing more than just to enforce the law. They must build and maintain positive relationships with the people we serve, especially the youth. We have strong hopes that a strong police community relations will in turn make Stratford a more united and safer community. The Stratford Police Department has created and implemented a police engagement program to demonstrate the stellar practices between community and police while providing a platform to discuss racism, racial profiling, high-profile brutality cases. Many of you have had the opportunity to participate in these training sessions. We know that consistent police engagement within the community builds trust, confidence, and productive relationships. Through the Stratford Police Department Engagement Program, P E P, we have conducted a series of talks discussing safe, healthy police engagement practices. They do this through open conversation and scenario role play. The mission is to ensure the safety of the community. We have been implementing the program in the school since January of two thousand eighteen, and some of you may know that we are, been nationally recognized. And they have recently facilitated PEP programs for the church groups, civics, and community organizations inside and outside of Stratford and across the nation. They've extended the scope of our youth program to include neighboring towns, organizations within the state, and beyond. Plans for Husky graduation continue with the community committee working on the guidelines given by Governor Lamont. Infrastructure projects continue at Exit Thirty-two, West Broad, Linden Avenue, and, and California Street. As Exit Thirty-three, site work is well underway. Route one-ten continues, and D O T has agreed, and agreed to improve, excuse me, pave Main Street up to the project. Projects also continue at DeLuca, Benel, Second Helena, Whitney Fields. Center School, um, will have a presentation by the developer, uh, proposed developers, and it'll be presented to the town council on the public in a week or two. Uh, Amazon will be having its online hiring process that started this month, and they plan on opening in mid-July. Um, contract plating on five forty Long Brook Avenue, Raymark Project is moving along schedule. A marketing analysis and plan for contract play, plating is being done as part of the prize package we received from the Brownfields Rodeo that Mary Dean and Kelly Kerrigan went to in California in December. The final product will be a ten-to-twelve page marketing package for the graphics and presentation of the property. The E C D has asked Kelly and Mary to present the case study for the October conference, revitalizing North, the New England Brownfield Summit twenty twenty. The Army Engine Plant, uh, we have been having frequent conversations with the developer, P S R, deep Army Corps of Engineers, and the, um, record of decision is expected in July. Uh, not, four ninety-five Lordship Boulevard has pulled demolition permits. That's the old Mobile Chemical. Demolition for the big building is already begun, and the surrounding businesses have been notified. On nineteen sixty-nine Main Street, the developer has gone before zoning at the end of May, and there is a multi-residential unit for proposed. There's a lot of discussion about that project. The project is not in the historic district, um, and the project has also been presented to the Architectural Review Board, who unanimously approved the design. Six oh eight Ferry Boulevard, a, uh, and you might remember that is the furthest, uh, project north for T O D. It is, um, about eighteen to twenty units of housing and one or two units of commercial development. The project has a lease for the ground floor from a wealth management company. Matt's Landing, which is the Sydney Street Development, the large self, self-storage unit should be completed in the fall, followed by a tripulty, and then a start. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, question, I'll open up for questions to Mayor, and, and if I may, Madam Mayor, just actually a question that I'd like to ask of you, um, regarding the PEP program, the police engagement program, um, having been someone who did, uh, go through it a couple of years ago, I know the value of it. I think it's excellent. I love that Stratford is a, a leader now at a national level with this. Um, do you foresee us expanding that program going forward? Um, given in light of, you know, what, what's going on in, in the world and how important it really is, um, have a community come together with, with its police? Um, gee, is that something you can look, we can look into going forward?
Well, the, the program is, um, being shared with a lot of different communities in a lot of different states. There are similar programs, um, but nothing quite as personal as our, as our PEP program. So, um, the whole calm, cool, comply scenario about deescalated violence and understanding the other shoes in which they walk is, uh, very humanizing, and I, I'm sure the creators of this program, which are James Lofton and, um, Lieutenant Kurt Eller, are more than happy to share these with other people and to expand it. And Aaron McGlocklin has been doing a phenomenal job also marketing this, uh, not only across the state, but it's also been recognized by Senator Blumenthal.
Excellent. Uh, thank you. I, uh, thank you very much. Uh, any other questions for the mayor? Questions for the mayor? Caitlin, I see your hand. Yep.
Um, paraffinic, I just want to say thank you, um, to all the organizing communication that your office has put out through different offices and community partnerships and residents in the town. Um, my question is regarding the phase-two opening. Uh, is there a contact person that the public would be able to contact in case they have a question? Is there a website? Do we have one?
The state of Connecticut has a website. It's C T dot gov slash coronavirus, and on it has all the reopening, uh, criteria and contact information. If there is an industry specific, um, we have contacts. You can call the office and we can direct them, uh, to them, whether it's, um, economic and community development, or the Health Department, or public safety.
Okay, and then I guess my follow-up question would be, is there anything publicized what Stratford is doing or anticipating for the phase-two opening? I just had a, a couple of parents asking me questions about summer programs or things of that nature, what the town, what we're doing.
Sure, so, um, that's a good point. I didn't mention, thank you, Caitlin, I didn't mention the Recreation Department, but Amy Noor, who's the director, has a plethora of summer programs that they're offering for youth. The playgrounds will be open, um, this summer. They are, um, ten students, ten children per two counselors. They will open up more as the registration grows. I believe for the eight weeks of summer, it's seventy-five dollars and lunch is provided. It's a deal, what a deal. Uh, they also, she also has the sports camps, um, happening for uh, non-contact sports such as golf and, um, tennis, and there are several others, but those are also on the website. Um, is there anything else specifically besides those that you're looking for?
It was just a general, um, overview. If we had anything published, I didn't see anything recently. I didn't know if there was something of anticipation with the second phase opening date, um, so residents could just have better access to what's happening here in town.
So, in the daily emails, we are, uh, publicizing what the governor has listed as.
Chair, Chris, this. Greg, um, h- hold on, Greg. We're in the middle of a conversation.
So, the weekly, or the, I'm sorry, the daily updates, um, from my office include the pertinent information, and we have rolled it out as, um, as we've gotten more finites for people to understand and to have. Um, so, if there's a polit, a particular specificity to the question, if you go to that website of the department that will be listed. So, for example, um, you know, taxes, you would go to the tax collector website. And so, all the information about the deferment has been on that website as well as the town's landing page. So I guess if you have particular interest, I can help you, or Mike can help you navigate through that. But otherwise, I would, my best suggestion would be to go to the department that seems the most likely to be of interest to whoever, whoever is looking for information.
Thank you.
Any other questions, enough for the mayor? Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Taveras. Yep. Thank you. Through the chair.
You may.
Yeah, that's the new mayor. Uh, good evening, Mayor. Um, this is Paul Taveras. Uh, as you may know that the, uh, Splash Playground has been defunded by the C D B G and that, uh, the money's been reallocated to, uh, Baldwin Center and Shiloh. Uh, if you remember last year, we spoke, and I know that I had believed you when you said that you wanted this to come to fruition. Uh, it's just come as quite a shock that, uh, this is officially has died. Um, I'm trying to explain to my constituents as best as possible that, um, I share in the discouragement. Um, I tend to believe as law, as well as some of the other folks, uh, in that affected area, that it's because the administration didn't have it, uh, formally placed in, um, Juliet Low, uh, that, that's the reason why it was killed. Uh, I did, uh, partner, uh, with, uh, I'm sorry, I just had a lapse, uh, but, uh, we, we, there was another location we looked at as far as Bird's Eye. And, uh, we never, the last, uh, Parks and Recs meeting we had was, uh, March, I believe, which was tabled, so I just wanted to get your take on your feelings on that, and, uh, maybe what better explanation I can give to the folks that I feel so dejected that, uh, the park has been officially, uh, killed.
Through the chair, uh, Counselor Taveras, the park hasn't been officially killed, meaning the project of the splash pad. However, the town was in jeopardy of losing significant dollars for untimeliness, which is why the C D B G Subcommittee decided to reappropriate the money to, um, the Baldwin Center, which also fit the low and moderate income criteria, as well as the handicap accessibility criteria for C D B G funding. The place that you and others had recommended for the splash pad was not acceptable to the Board of Education or the Stratford Police Department, and this was discussed at many, at many times. It was also discussed at a Board of Education liaison meeting. And so there were no other recommended places outside of that one on Central Avenue, I believe, uh, that I know of. So I'm sorry that your constituency is dejected, but I can tell you that those that are part of the Baldwin Center facility and part of Shiloh Gardens where you appropriated the money for are very happy that their projects are gonna be funded and that they're gonna have a wonderful, improved senior service facility as well as a housing complex for handicap accessibility.
Thank you. Through the chair.
Let me, uh, all right, go ahead, Paul, go ahead. If I want.
It was Chad Esposito, and we checked out Bird's Eye, and we looked at that. I just wanted to, I know you were talking about the Johnson location, but Chad Esposito and I did, uh, back in February, uh, look at a, at a, a really good site, and I thought maybe that would have been a, a more amenable site, but I just wanted to, for the record for that. Uh, my second question, if I couldn't, uh, through the chair.
Wait.
Um, since that, uh, could I at least get some, um, assurances that some of the money from Public Works could go do fixing some of the dilapidated, uh, playground swings and, uh, replace, they sort of mulch in some of the playgrounds, uh, in D three, uh, I'm looking at it also from a safety standpoint. Uh, some of the equipment is rusted, and there are some damages there, and I certainly don't want any, uh, any, of course, any liabilities against the town, but, uh, I have the pictures, so is there a way that, uh, some of that money can be allocated to at least fix that up?
Through you, uh, Council Chair, through the council, councilman of the third district. If you had shared those pictures or would like to share them, because I haven't seen them yet, we'll do our very best to get those taken care of. We do uh, site assessments of the playgrounds, replace the mulch and the fiber, because it's not really mulch, because it's a more substantial uh, ground covering to protect, protects against falls, injuries during falls. We'd be happy to look at it. And back to your statement about Bird's Eyes School as a possible splash pad location. If the C D B G wants to fund it, Counselor, we're more than willing to consider it, but it's really not up to the town council unless they want to spend, uh, fund a splash pad through the capital improvement program to pay for this.
Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Poison, while you earlier, sir, with your hand.
Yes, thank you, your chairman. Uh, Madam Mayor, uh, speaking of the parks, uh, it seems that the Parks Department is going around town, um, like on a sequential basis, almost kind of hitting each park and trying to clean them up. And I was just wondering, uh, how Juliet Low Park is doing, because it was just being talked about, and I was gonna ask anyway.
Through the chair, to the councilman of the sixth district, it is, um, pretty remarkable. It is a beautiful park. Uh, the pavilion is large, has power, has water. Um, and it really looks quite lovely.
Okay, thank you.
Dave, did you have, the Council of Harden, did you wait again? We're delayed here. No, okay. Um, Caitlin, Caitlin, go ahead. I see your hand.
Thank you.
Uh, Greg Cam.
Greg can go, because he, I don't think he has to go. I'm okay.
Thank you.
Greg, can you hear me okay? Because I think we have a really bad delay on your audio. Greg?
Testing, one, two, three.
I can hear you, Greg.
Oh my gosh.
Greg, if you can hear me.
I hear you fine, Chris. Is that better?
Yeah, that's better. Go ahead, why don't you continue?
I can hear. Okay. Thank you, Chairman. Question for the Mayor. Will recall that an amendment was put forward to fund what was called a marketing strategic plan for our Economic Development Group, that we would be able to outreach more effectively with national developers and investors who work in the space of municipal urban development. I'm glad you refer to the Brownfields Rodeo, that that's an example of outreach where we sent two officials to that event, and they earned a $25,000 grant. So, whatever the cost of that trip was, it had a big ROI return, not just from the $25,000, but also the visibility that are brought to Stratford. Do we plan to do more outreach, quote, "marketing," attending these events for this year, or? I'm looking to see if we can kind of replicate that result.
Through you, Council Chair, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Well, is there any particular ones that we have? I know COVID may interrupt some of these things, but maybe a yes is a perfect answer for right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Any other questions? Caitlin, go ahead.
Mayor Hoidic, you had mentioned that there were going to be four, I think I heard you say, four additional pop-up testing sites for COVID-19. Did I hear you correctly?
Chair, yes, Councilman, Councilwoman, yes.
We have two designated spots in Stratford, and we'll have four additional pop-up locations. Is that information available on the Health Department's website, just so if anyone listening knows where to go?
Through the chair, to Councilwoman Sheik, the Health Department has a dedicated website for COVID-19. When those pop-ups are confirmed by Optimus, they will be on that website, yes. And then we will also do a press release as we have done for every other major public information that we want to share with the public regarding COVID-19.
Thank you.
Awesome. Other questions? Seeing, seeing none, we're going to move on. Thank you all. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Next item on the agenda is item 4.3.1. I'll entertain a motion for, excuse me, 4.3.1.1. Entertain a motion for that.
This is Laura Dancho, District 10. I motion to approve item 4.3.1.1, an ordinance appropriating $24,650,000 for the pump station renovation and upgrade project, and that a second reading of this ordinance be dispensed with as copies thereof have been received by all council members, and at the same time be adopted as a second reading in the foregoing B, and is hereby approved effective 30 days from passage.
Motion by Ms. Dancho, do I have a second to that?
I second this, Bill O'Brien, Ninth District.
Second by Bill O'Brien, I heard. Okay, any discussion on the item?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poisson.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make a note that there was a Scrivener's error on the list that was originally sent out under Public Works and Parks miscellaneous tree removal disposal and stump grinding program townwide.
Mr. Poisson, let me interrupt you, sir, respectfully. I believe you're referring to something on the CIP list. This is the bonding ordinance for the 24 million, the pump stations, item 4.3.1.1.
Oh, I'm very sorry, Mr. Chairman. Sorry.
No worries. Any discussion?
We're just on...
Discussion for Greg.
We're just, 4.3.1, we're just going to discuss and vote on that one item.
Okay. That's, yep. Any other discussion on this one item? Okay. Hearing none, I'm going to call this to a vote. Ms. Paquette?
This is Margot Paquette, Council Clerk. This is the roll call, vote for agenda item 4.3.1.1. Ms. Sheik?
Yes.
Mr. Taveras?
Yes.
Mr. Harden? Mr. Khan?
Yes.
Mr. Poisson?
Yes.
Mr. Perillo?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Dancho?
Yes.
Mr. Pia?
Your votes are...
That is unanimous vote.
Thank you, Ms. Paquette. Next item on the agenda is item 4.3.1.2. Entertain that motion.
Mr. Chairman, this is Laura Dancho, District 10. I motion that we approve item 4.3.1.2, an ordinance authorizing issuance of $24,650,000 in bonds and obligations of the town to meet the appropriation for the pump station renovation and upgrade project.
Motion has been made by Councilwoman Dancho. Do I have a second?
Chairman, it's Ryan LaClair. That motion should also include that the second reading of the ordinance be dispensed with as copies thereof have been received by all council members, and that...
Yeah, I'm getting to that. One second. I'm getting to that. I had to flip it over. Additionally, I would like the second reading of this ordinance be dispensed with as copies have been received by all council members, and that the same be adopted as a second reading in the foregoing B, and is hereby approved effective 30 days from passage.
Thank you, Ms. Dancho. Do I have a second to that motion?
Bill O'Brien, I'll also second this.
Okay, seconded by Bill. Any discussion on this item?
Greg, I have you. Go ahead, sir. Okay, thank you. The, we, we've often referred to the audit report regarding WPCA, and Municipal Financial Services, you know, they identified dozens of operational and financial failures, if you will, in the period prior to Laura's administration. One of those items mentioned, WPCA Capital Improvement Fund, were being used for town purposes. So, when the WPCA money, when the WPCA rate, when their money's being used to pay for town projects, and essentially we're double taxing ratepayers. So, given that we have a historical problem with this, I'd like to follow the Bond Council's recommendation. The Bond Council did say that our paragraph section eight would assist what he would recommend for other, but during our auditing with the acknowledgement that WPCA is a separate entity from the town, albeit owned by the town, that in the event that Clean Water Act money is not being used to get the bond, that if we use the money for the bond, that it would be appropriate according to the Bond Council, that we stipulated that money would be reimbursed to the WPCA by the town in the event that there were surplus funds that the town decided to use it for non-WPCA. So, I would like, one of the amendments that would be consistent with Bond Council's conclusion, so that we could just assure that the case paying for it is within. So, through the chair, asking for a bond, excuse me, attorney recommendation on revised language in section eight, so I can propose an amendment that would be consistent with all other legalities.
So, okay, so Greg, let me jump in into LaClair, Mr. Work, you guys were at the pass ordinance meeting. It's my recollection that, and I'm not disputing anything Greg said, but it's just my recollection that Mr. Adriana clearly, we're going through the water fund, we don't need to change...
Mr. Chairman, John Florick here. Yes, it is the intention and the expectation that the pump station upgrades will go through the Clean Water Fund. That's correct. Absolutely.
Mr. Khan's, hold on Greg, hold on one second Greg. To Mr. Khan, asking you guys, the town attorneys for clarity on this, Greg, do you have a specific amendment you want to ask them for? If you have a specific amendment? I'm not trying to guide the question, if you want to get...
Okay. There is a risk, there is a risk that the town will not use the Clean Water Act to, to get the bond. In the event the town does not use that, the amendment to section eight shows that any bond proceeds would be dedicated to improvement. Let me try and allocate any unused bond proceeds to public improvements previously. You missing me again?
No.
The amendment would be to revise the sentence in section eight. In the event that the Clean Water Act, not the bonding store, that any unused proceeds... That's not, that's not my, that's not my background noise. I'd like to offer the amendment, but I'm preparing with you.
I could not make, Greg, your one really...
All I'm getting, background noise, background noise. Somebody is playing electronics. And Chris, do you hear it? Do you hear the background noise?
I, I, I don't hear that much, to be honest with you, Greg. If everyone else can just mute themselves. Bill O'Brien, can you mute?
What's that?
Can you mute yourself, Bill?
Sure.
Greg, you want to state that? Is that better?
That's absolutely better. Thank you. There's only one sentence in section eight, and it would be, any unused bond proceeds would go to public improvements, previously authorized by the Town Council for bonding, consistent with applicable laws deemed necessary and advisable in the best interest of the town, Director Finance. You'd add a new sentence, and the, the new sentence to section eight would be, in the event the Clean Water Act was not used to subsidize, that the unused funds to WPCA activities, projects would be refunded to the WPCA.
Okay, so Mr. Khan put forth an amendment.
The new sentence...
I heard you, Greg.
Could you ask him to read that slower? We need a second for the amendment. Could you ask him again, Mr. Chairman, to read that slower, because we keep losing him. He's going too quickly.
Greg, did you hear Attorney LaClair?
In the event that the bond was not underwritten by the Clean Water Act, and there is unused surplus funds, if those funds are used for non-WPCA purposes, then the town will reimburse the WPCA for those unspent funds. Period.
Mr. Khan's put forth a motion to amend, that he just read it in. Mr. Claire, was that, is that good?
Well, I understand it, but I think Mr. Florick has a comment regarding who is, he needs to explain who's taking out these bonds, so it's clear to Mr. Khan and everyone else.
Well, Mr. Chairman, let's get a second first, and then we can discuss.
Fair enough. Is there a second to this motion?
A second, Paul Taveras.
Alright, Paul, second by Paul Taveras, discussion. So, Mr. Flor, Town Attorney Flor?
Yes. I have to be completely honest. My recollection of Attorney Andrea's advice was, was, was not in concert with what Councilman Khan has said. The town is taking out these bonds, not the WPCA. And the reason the town is taking out these bonds is because investors want the full faith and credit obligation of the town to stand behind these bonds. They do not want a simple pledge by the WPCA that sewer use funds will be allocated to pay these bonds. It's not a strong enough assurance to them. What I thought Attorney Andrea was saying was that in the 30 municipalities for which he and his law firm, Pullman Comley, ask or act as a bond counsel for, that there is an understanding between the municipality and that particular WPCA, that although the town is taking out these bonds, that the, the payments will be made and be funded through the WPCA sewer use fees. I did not hear him say, although I'm, I'm open to being corrected, I did not hear him say that there should be an agreement in place that of any surplus monies, if in fact there are any, be used, as Mr. Khan says. I didn't hear him say that. What I thought I heard him say was that it would be unwise to do so. The reason that the Bond Council drafted that provision was to allow flexibility in the future, and should there be any excess monies left over, again, which is not expected, but should there be, it would be better and more financially prudent to allow those monies to be spent on projects already approved for bonding by the council. That was what I thought his advice was.
Right, so...
I mean, thank you, Chris. Mr. Florick is correct, and the conversation then continued as we, Dawn Savo acknowledged that the WPCA is one, a separate financial entity, an enterprise fund from the town. She also acknowledged that the bond would be paid for out of the WPCA ratepayers. And by hearing that, the Bond Council, he was then open, he expressed kind of a surprise. He's like, well, if that's the case, then the town should reimburse the WPCA if the town used its flexibility. So, we're not taking away the town's flexibility with the amendment. What we're assuring is, we're preventing the town, quote, like they've had in the past, using WPCA money for non-WPCA purposes. This amendment is consistent with the Bond Council's recommendation, that we're not revising the flexibility, or eliminating the flexibility, we're simply assuring that the town will reimburse the WPCA if its judgment was to use the unspent funds for a non-WPCA project. And the Bond Council expressed support for that, once he had the clarification from Dawn. That is the intent of the amendment, is to prevent an incident like we had back in 2013 and 2015, simply to establish that it's WPCA's liability, and if the town is going to use the money... establish that it's WPCA's liability, and if the town is going to use the money, it retains that privilege. But it would then credit the WPCA for that money. So the bond payers, inconsistent with the definition of an enterprise fund, the bond payers would not be paying for non-WPCA services.
Any, thank you, Greg. Any other discussion on the item?
Nope.
No? Okay. Margot, can you hear me? We're going to call to a vote, please.
Okay, this is Margot Pickett, Council Clerk. This is the roll call vote for the amendment for Agenda Item 4.3.1.2. Ms. Shake.
Yes.
Mr. Taveras.
Yes.
Mr. Harden.
Yes.
Mr. Can.
Yes.
Mr. Poisson.
No.
Are we, Margot, are we voting on the amendment?
The amendment.
Yes, it's on the amendment. I'm sorry, Mr. Poisson. Okay. Mr. Poisson.
No.
Mr. Perillo.
No.
Mr. Connor.
No.
Mr. O'Brien.
No.
Ms. Dancho.
No.
Mr. Pia.
No.
Four in favor. Six opposed.
Okay. All right, next. Let's see here.
I believe you have a motion in the second pending, Mr. Can.
Right, thank you. I'm sorry. Going back to, to the amendment fail. The, going back to the original motion now, further discussion on that, that has not discussed. No? Okay, Margot. Vote.
Margot. This is the roll call for Agenda Item 4.3.1.2.
Shake. Yes.
Mr. Taveras. Mr. Taveras.
Yes, yes.
Harden.
Can you pass me?
Mr. Can.
No.
Mr. Poisson.
Yes.
No.
Mr. Perillo.
Yes, for Mr. Perillo.
Mr. Poisson, you voted yes?
I voted yes.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Ms. Dancho.
Yes.
Mr. Pia.
Yes.
Mr. Harden.
Yes.
That is nine to one.
Thank you, Mr. Pickett. Next item on the agenda is item 4.3.2.1. I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poisson.
Make a motion to approve item 4.3.2.1 in ordinance appropriating thirteen million nine hundred and seventy-four thousand for various public improvements and equipment in the capital improvement program for fiscal year twenty dash twenty-one.
Okay, by Mr. Poisson.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, it's Brian Leclerc. That motion should also include that the second reading be dispensed with, as copies have been received by all council members. That this be adopted as a second reading and the foregoing being hereby is approved effective thirty days from passage, please.
Mr. Poisson.
Yes, I'll agree with that. Like Ms. Dancho said before, that was on like the third page after this I was getting there.
Is that acceptable, Brian?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you would just need a second to his motion as amended, please.
Mr. Harden. Yeah. Gotcha, Dave. All right, any discussion on, on this? Yes, sir, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to point out that there was a, a Skirner's error on this. Under Public Works, Parks Department, miscellaneous tree removal, disposal and stump grinding program townwide should read one hundred and fifty thousand dollars and not the fifty thousand dollars that was previously given to us.
Okay, did everybody hear Mr. Poisson on that one, on top of page six? Okay, so Mr. Town Attorney, Mr. Leclerc, being that it's, he made the point on the record, is that okay?
I, I, I would have a motion to amend to make it crystal clear in the item to change that number, to amend that item from fifty to one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Okay. Second by Ms. Dancho, any discussion on this, or should we just vote? Okay, we'll call a vote on, on the amendment by Mr. Poisson, Ms. Pickett.
I'd just like to make a comment.
Hold on one second, Caitlin. You make a comment on, on the amendment only?
Correct. Um, I'm just happy that we found that there was an error, and it's not only fifty thousand dollars that's being allocated for the Trump and tree removal expenses for all residents of the town, because we had discussed in previous meetings, brought up that that dollar value was not sufficient. So I'm happy that that number is now corrected to be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which will serve residents throughout the entire town. So thank you for catching that, Mr. Poisson.
Thank you. Ms. Pickett, we'll call for a vote, please.
Margot, I'm coughing to making the error. That was my, my mistake.
We'll forgive you.
Thank you.
This time.
Oh, boy.
Don't let it happen again.
Oh, boy. You want me to go forward with the vote?
Yes, please, go for it.
Margot Pickett, Council Clerk, this is the roll call vote for the amendment for Agenda Item 4.3.2.1. Ms. Shake.
Yes, thank you, Margot.
You're welcome. Mr. Taveras.
Yes.
Mr. Harden.
Yes, Margot.
Thank you. Mr. Can.
Yes.
Mr. Poisson.
Yes.
Mr. Perillo.
Yes.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Ms. Dancho.
Yes.
Mr. Pia.
I vote yes.
That is a unanimous vote.
So back, the motion has been amended to one fifty on page six, going back to the original discussion. Mr. Poisson, give your hand up.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make another amendment.
Yeah.
I, under schools improvements and parks, now baseball field renovation should be increased from one million five hundred thousand to one million eight hundred thousand. And facilities, maintenance, Baldwin Center renovations go from five hundred thousand to two hundred.
Okay, so Mr. Poisson, make, excuse me, made a motion to amend, a second to that.
Second by Dave Harden.
Dave, okay. Thank you, Dave. Any discussion on this?
Can, can you repeat that, please, because I couldn't hear all the background.
Sure, so hold on, if everyone, unless you're absolutely ready to speak, unless you're absolutely ready to speak, just try to stay on mute, because there, there's a few background noises that do pop up. Can, the motion, correct me if I'm wrong, the motion was to amend the, the Parks Field Line item, field renovation by plus three hundred, yeah, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then the discussion on this, so Mr. Timmyak and Renee from a, from a project, actually Renee, if I can ask Renee to, hi Renee.
Hi.
How are you? So this was something that we got brought up. So this was something that got brought up, basically to, to finish out the, the field renovation from a online implementation standpoint.
That is correct. This will complete that project so it can move forward.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions? I would direct maybe to Renee or Poisson, that's just from the CIP standpoint. Any other questions?
Chris, it's Greg Can.
Recognized, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. I'm, I'm looking at our agenda, and I'm seeing under Public Works, tell me which item. They're not numbered, but we have restoration of ball fields and parks. We're moving it from two hundred to five.
Greg, can you speak that?
Hey, under restoration of ball fields and parks, it's currently at two hundred. Are we increasing it by a hundred thousand dollars to three hundred?
No, that's, that's not the right item, Mr. Chairman.
No, Greg, so, Greg, so right on page six of your agenda.
Yes.
Okay, bottom of the page, Parks, Benell Baseball Field Reno, plus three hundred.
Okay.
Clear?
Clear to one point eight.
Yes.
And what was the offset to that?
Offset, Mr. Poisson, is it on page, sorry. Mr. Poisson, the.
Page, the very top of page seven.
The Baldwin Center renovations minus three hundred, and that was from a timeline implementation standpoint of projects getting spread out.
Was, was that, oh, Chris, a question?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, and go ahead, Greg.
So was this decision dedicated on CDBG approving money for Baldwin Center?
No, no, Renee, can I ask you to, it was not, Greg. Renee, if I may, or Chris Timniak, from a, just, can you explain to me the work that we're planning on doing when we, this money was proposed in the mayor's budget and CIP over, you know, a few months ago, based off of the timeline and implementation of the projects for both of these facilities over the next year to two to three, what's changed with that?
Um, just the timing of the different projects we want to do within the building, access to materials with COVID, it has changed the timeline for things, as well as completing projects and being able to keep the center open. So we have to do them in smaller batches so that we don't have to close the facility for, for months on end. And, you know, we can still get, you know, projects done and facility being used.
Hey, correct me if I'm wrong, Renee. The Benell renovation, you know, by adding additional funds, basically gets this thing ready and able to play for the kids immediately versus delaying it a couple of years is what I was initially told.
Well, we wouldn't have been able to start it until we had all the funds in place, so that would have set us out until the next capital budget. So you're looking at, you know, next July twenty twenty-one, before you could then break ground, we've already gotten all the engineering in place. We're ready to, you know, go put the specs out to bid and, and get this done, and this is a perfect time to do it while the kids are not going to be used right now with what's going on.
Thank you.
Um, so, Chris, one last, hopefully last question.
Go ahead, go ahead.
He might identify himself for the record.
This is Greg Can. And to the Benell Baseball Field, did we have, when, what was the date of the RFP that gave us the of one point five million? And was there a change to that RFP? Or did they come back and say, sorry, we can't do it for the original one point five that we bid?
So, Mr. Poisson, you want to, you've been kind of spearheading this on the Parks and Rec? Or, or Mr. Timniak? I don't, I don't have the answer to that question at this moment, so I just want to make sure, see who does.
Yeah, I think that either Renee or Mr. Timniak could explain it in more detail of RFPs and along those lines, but I'd be happy to help.
Okay, Mr. Timniak or Renee?
Chris Timniak here. After we put the mayor's proposal in, we got an estimate back to complete the Benell Field Turf Project. The estimate, based upon the bids we had come in, was higher than what we had budgeted. So this allows us to complete the project, to get the field open and ready to play as soon as possible. And that happened, if I can like mentally go back sometime April, April range?
Yes. That, that, I think that's, that's sufficient, that the RFP bids came in higher than we projected. Okay.
Any other discussion on the item? Okay, hearing none.
Oh, Chris, other, can we ask other questions? Oh, we're on the, we're on the amendment.
Yeah, yeah, I will allow you, absolutely, Greg, to, but let's vote on, I'm going to call a vote on the amendment by Mr. Poisson first, and then we'll go back to discussion on the previous, as amended, okay? Ms. Pickett, we'll, we'll call a roll call on just this amendment.
Margot Pickett, Council Clerk, this is the roll call vote for the amendment for Agenda Item 4.3.2.1. Ms. Shake. Ms. Shake. On the amendment.
Yeah.
Mr. Taveras. Mr. Taveras.
Yes.
Mr. Harden.
Yes.
Mr. Can.
Yes.
Mr. Poisson.
Yes.
Mr. Perillo.
Yes.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Ms. Dancho.
Yes.
Mr. Pia.
Vote yes.
That is a unanimous vote.
Okay, so we're going to go back to, we're going to go back to the item 4.3.2.1 as amended with two previous amendments. Any discussion on this item that we haven't discussed yet?
Greg Can.
Greg, you have the floor, go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman. I, as we just learned, the dynamics of making an initial estimate and getting the RFP, we need to make changes. I'd like to look at the list, some of our scheduled projects and see which one of them are on this eleven million dollar bond appropriation. But we may have an RFP that is lower than the initial estimate. One example might be, well, would be the, the gymnasium floors. They may have come in on or under the original estimate. Chris, could I ask about specific ones, just to? For example, Baldwin Center renovation, it's pegged at five hundred thousand dollars. Have we have, do we have an RFP for that? Or do we have a response to the?
Councilman Can, that's, that's an ongoing project which started last year with, I believe we put seven hundred thousand dollars into upgrading the Baldwin Center at the time, they've been working on things such as the elevator, such as painting, they redid the floor. So it's, it's an ongoing cycle. We have a list of things we need to get done, including upgrading the HVAC unit.
Okay. It is. Like Renee described.
We, we, we bid those out individually when they come in, and, and as you're aware, you know, at the end of the year, Jay Wahlberg was giving the council, you know, a bond closeout list, to close out bonds with, you know, projects which had, you know, small dollars left in there from, you know, the, what we didn't spend down in completing the projects.
Another example might be the BOE boiler replacement. Those were probably scheduled for the summer, and we likely have an RFP already.
Yeah.
So Greg, meanwhile, Chris is looking. Dawn, maybe jump in for a moment?
Um, sure, Chris.
Hi, Dawn.
Oh, hi. I am really not up to date on where we are with all the RFPs on these projects. Normally, what we do when we're bonding is we get some kind of quote, and then we, we, you know, we we get some kind of quote, and then we, we, you know, we understand, um, what the general amount would be, and we don't actually go out to bond until funding is in place, because, I mean, I'm sorry, go out to bid until it's in place, because if we go out to bid and then the funding isn't in place, whoever bids on the project is, you know, is not going to want to take the time and trouble to put in a competitive bid if there isn't some, uh, approved funding already, so these numbers are normally, um, estimates, not quotes or past experience, and maybe Renee could speak to that more if, if somebody still has a question.
If I may, um, is it safe to say, I understand, I think I, Greg, I think I, you know, what you're trying to ask, just how precise can we be on these estimates in therefore from bonding, in that triples over bonding? Go on. Based off what Chris just said, and knowing that we did this with Jay last year, we break the list at the end of the year in terms of bond closeout line items, saying, hey, we bought, we budgeted a million for this, this item, we only spent 950,000, let's close out, let's have the council vote on closing this 50 grand. Is that a fair assessment?
Yes, that's a fair assessment.
Greg, would that, comfortable with that, because I think that's the most educated, logical explanation we could try to.
Yeah, Chris, I'll, uh, in, in the language of this bond, you know, we're giving the mayor, the mayor and the finance director flexibility on how to spend surplus money. So it, unlike in June, in June of last year, we would unanimously approve that unspent bond would go to paying down bonds. Now we're proposing, um, bond that would allow surplus monies to be used with, so to speak, although within the parameters of prior town council. Um, I'll, one more question.
I can't hear anything, I don't.
It's a lot of background noise, Chris.
I got it, I got it.
There we go.
Next question.
I'd like to make an amendment that some monies be transferred to neighborhood parks, you know, many of which haven't been improved in six, eight, 10 years. But, so my direction or my questions are, and so just to Renee and Dawn, are any of these projects already RFP'd, where we have savings versus the initial proposal, that we can then redirect and make explicit, make an explicit allocation to improving neighborhood parks?
So Dawn or Renee, if you can, what we currently do for neighborhood, what's in the budget?
Let me just, just go backwards, just a little bit back to the boiler, just so you can understand, um, this year, we got, um, Franklin, Johnson, and Second Holane done, they all needed boiler work. We have, uh, upcoming Eli Whitney and Flood next in line. Boilers go anywhere from 200 to 300 apiece, depending on what they find when they open them up, what section they can save and what they can't. So we earmark money in hopes that we'll be able to get two boilers out of what we've put there, they haven't been put out to RFP yet because we're not there yet, we're still trying to complete these other boilers that, um, we've got, that we've got paid for in appropriated funds. So we don't want to take away from boiler money, because I, I don't think we have any cushion there, and potentially we not, may not be able to get two done like we'd hope to. Um, the other estimates, you know, we don't have RFPs out where we have gotten solid numbers back, uh, that we said there's a cushion left, um, that we could pull from, everything we give, we get pretty tight numbers, I mean, it's, it's as close, I mean, we did look at this once before to see if there was anything for reductions, and they're, they're tight.
Okay, thank you, Renee, um, my last comment is, uh, this would be to the mayor and on the finance director, you know, given the clause here that gives you discretion over within parameters, please think of neighborhood parks, especially in those areas which had high revaluations, that they would have a visible improvement to their neighborhood from a improved park, if you will. So in the event we have surplus monies, um, I hope that neighborhood parks would fall under town council already approved, and that they would give, uh, they would receive a high weight in terms of priorities. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Um, any other discussion on this item as amended?
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr. O'Brien, yes.
Yes, a couple of observations. First of all, the Parks Department's been doing an incredible job this spring on many fields in town, making great use of an excess of clay at DeLuca Field. Uh, secondly, if you look at the bottom of page six, going back to the concerns of Mr. Tavarez, there's $125,000 in CIP for playground replacements. And then I think, I think Section 2 spells it out pretty good about any money that's left over, how that can be used.
Thank you, uh, Mr. O'Brien, the DeLuca, uh, item was, is great that we have that extra clay, because it's, I know that, I know some, a lot of the Little League ball fields all over town are, are going to benefit from that, because the Little League and Pony have been asking for that, for some of the lifts to get, uh, redone, and that extra clay is great for the kids, so good point on that. Any other discussion on the item? No, okay, Margot, we'll call this to a vote, please, um, uh, the, it's going to be a vote, a roll call vote on 4.3.2.1 as amended twice previously.
Well, now that you took the script away from me, this is Margot Paquette, Council Clerk, and we're just going to jump into the vote, Ms. Shake.
Yes.
Mr. Tavarez?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes, yes.
Mr. King?
Yes, from Greg.
Mr. Poisson?
Yes.
Mr. Perillo?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Dan Show?
Yes.
Mr. Pia?
Yes.
That is a unanimous vote.
Thank you, well, next item on the agenda, 4.3.2.2, um, anyone like to make a motion on, Mr. Poisson, if you want to keep consistent?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve Item 4.3.2.2, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of $13,974,000 of bonds of the town to meet the appropriation for various public improvements and equipment in the capital improvement program for fiscal year 2021, and pending issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowing for such purpose, before Mr. Leclerc jumps in, I'm turning the page. And be it resolved that the second readings, of the second reading of this ordinance be dispensed with, as copies thereof have been received by all council members, and that the same be adopted as a second reading, and the foregoing be and is hereby approved effective 30 days from passage.
Excellent, thank you, sir, do I have a second to that?
Laura Dan Show. Dave is great.
I heard, okay, sorry, well, I heard Dave voice first, um, so I'll open up for discussion, so Mr. Mr. Leclerc, being that we made the amendments in the two prior, do we have to make the same amendments to this?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Brian Leclerc, yes, I'd recommend that, uh, the same amendments be made to the Exhibit A on this.
Okay. Right, Mr. Town Attorney, would it be okay if I said as amended in the previous item?
I would read in specifically the two amendments, one to correctly 150,000, uh, they could be done at the same motion, one to reduce the, uh, Banel Field, uh, I'm sorry, to increase Banel Field by 300 and reduce the Baldwin by 200.
Okay, I'll, I'll make that motion, I'll just combine them all into one, as the town attorney has suggested. And so I'd like to make a motion to, um, note the Scrivener's error under Parks, uh, Public Works Parks miscellaneous tree removal disposal and stump grinding program townwide should not read 50,000, it should read $150,000. And also, as just previously amended in the last item, that under school improvements, parks, Banel Baseball Field renovation go from 1.5 million to 1.8 million, and under town facilities, building maintenance, Baldwin Center renovations, as just previously amended in the previous item, go from 500,000 to 200,000.
All right, motion by Mr. Poisson to amend, do I have a second?
Second, Dave Harden.
Harden, second, Dave, Mr. Council, Councilman Harden, sorry, second, uh, any discussion on, on the amendment? Pretty straightforward. Okay, Margot, we'll call a vote on the amendment, please.
This is Margot Paquette, Council Clerk, this is the roll call vote for Agenda Item, the amendment for Agenda Item 4.3.2.2, Ms. Shake.
Yes.
Mr. Tavarez?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Cann?
Yes.
Mr. Poisson?
Yes.
Mr. Perillo?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Dan Show?
Yes.
Mr. Pia?
Here votes aye.
That is a unanimous vote.
Thank you, well, Ms. Paquette, next item on the agenda is Item 4.3.2. Want to take a motion?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, you've just done the amendment, you have to discuss.
Thank you, sorry, we're going to go back to, uh, the item as amended, thank you, Mr. Hamilton. So the item as amended, 4.3.2 as amended, any further discussion that, that has not been discussed? Okay, hearing none, uh, Ms. Paquette, we'll call, roll call vote, uh, on the item.
This is Margot Paquette, Council Clerk, the roll call vote for Agenda Item 4.3.2.2 as amended, Ms. Shake.
Yes.
Mr. Tavarez?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes, Margot.
Thank you, Mr. Harden, Mr. Cann?
Yes.
Mr. Poisson?
Yes.
Mr. Perillo?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Dan Show?
Yes.
Mr. Pia?
Here votes aye.
That is a unanimous vote.
Thank you, well, now I can move on, uh, next item on the agenda is 4.3.2. I'll entertain a motion on that, Mr. Poisson.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve Item 4.3.2, uh, payment to Nikon not to exceed $7,613 to reset precast concrete curb for emergency access.
Okay, motion by Mr. Poisson, do I have a second to that?
Laura Dan Show, District Town, I'll second that.
Okay, seconded by Ms. Dan Show, any discussion on this?
Chris, Greg Cann?
Greg, go ahead.
Will this change order come out of our, I'll call it contingency, discretionary contingency might be the best way to call it.
Ken, do you, do you want to comment, or Chris Timniak from Public Works? Or maybe Chris is better? Or Renee?
I'm sorry, you're talking about the change order for Turner, for the 451?
No, it's Public Works, uh, the Nikon 7,000 for the, uh, concrete. That's for the Route 110 project?
Oh. Yeah. This is, this is a route that, you're exactly right, Ken, John Casey did give me an update on this, um, this was done, this will come out of the contingency, uh, um, Greg, to answer your question specifically.
Yeah, good, Greg.
Yes, I, I thought it was for the high school, but I'm glad we got that explanation, thank you, guys.
Chris, did I just verify this, the Route 110 project was not our funding, was it?
But no, that was a combination of the state funding and Sikorsky, and we did have some, we did have some funding in that as well, it was a three-way combination.
Right, thank you.
And, uh, Mr. Poisson, the friendly amendment that Ms. Paquette sent out today, uh, would that, is that falling under this one?
No, no, that's a whole other, uh, change order.
No problem.
Yeah, it has nothing to do with this one.
Fair enough, any other discussion on 4.3.2? No, okay, Ms. Paquette, roll call, please.
Uh, this is Margot Paquette, this is the roll call vote for Agenda Item 4.3.2, Ms. Shake.
Yes.
Mr. Tavarez?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Cann?
Yes.
Mr. Poisson?
Yes.
Mr. Perillo?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Dan Show?
Yes.
Mr. Pia?
Here votes aye.
That is a unanimous vote.
Well, uh, next item on the agenda, 4.3.3.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Poisson.
Uh, I'd, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, I'd like to make a motion to waive the rules to add an item under the agenda, because it does fall under Public Works.
You may.
I'd like to make a motion to, um, sorry, I have to look at my phone here, so excuse me. Uh, this is a change order that did not get to us in time by the time the agenda was sent out, but Margot emailed it all out to us today. Uh, it's a change order for the Banel, uh, Banel Turf renovation, and it's a change order in the amount of $27,463.70, and that is for the, uh, lighting, we're upgrading the lighting at the field to LED, which are more cost efficient, and put the lights where they should be on the field, instead of spreading it out all over the neighborhood. And the change order is for $27,463.70, and that's to install the controlling unit in the field house, that's going to make the lights, um, programmable through a computer or a cell phone app, so that people don't have to be literally standing at the field to turn them on and off, so we're moving into the 21st century as a.
Mr. Chairman, it's, uh, Brian Leclerc, I would suggest that the item be as follows formally, resolved that Field Turf USA Change Order Proposal Number Two in the amount of $27,463.70 for Control Link Electrical Equipment and LED fixture on the concession building be and is hereby approved.
That's what he meant, do I have a second to that motion?
Yes, Bill O'Brien, District 9, I second it.
Okay, seconded by Bill, any discussion on this item?
This is a discussion to add it to the agenda first, Mr. Chairman.
Correct, this is a discussion to add the item to the agenda, so, um, let's do that, any other discussion? No, okay, uh, Margot, roll call on to add the item to the agenda, please.
Margot Paquette, Council Clerk, this is the roll call vote to add the item, Ms. Shake?
Yes.
Mr. Tavarez?
Yes.
Mr. Harden? Mr. Cann?
Yes.
Mr. Poisson?
Yes.
Mr. Perillo?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Dan Show?
Yes.
Mr. Pia?
Here votes aye.
That is a unanimous vote.
Thank you, that's an item that's been added to the agenda, um, Mr. Poisson, if you'd like to, uh, move the item?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve, um, Field Turf Change Order Number Two.
Okay, any, uh, do I have a second to this, please?
Yes, seconded by Bill O'Brien.
Well, okay, any discussion on the, uh, on the item now?
Uh, Chris, it's Greg Cann.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Under CIP, we just voted to include $200,000 for LED lighting upgrade for various ball fields and parks. Was this lighting upgrade excluded from that $200,000?
Yes, this is separate money, Greg, this is money that was in the CIP just for Banel Turf renovations, so this LED project is not taking away from that $200,000 for the LED that's currently in the CIP we just passed.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the item? Hearing none, Ms. Paquette, we'll call a vote, please.
Margot Paquette, Council Clerk, this is the roll call vote for the added item of the change. the change order. Ms. Shake?
Yes.
Mr. Tavarez?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Khan?
Yes.
Mr. Poisson?
Yes.
Mr. Perillo?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Dancho?
Yes.
Mr. Pia?
Your votes are.
That's a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Next item will be 4.3.3, Item A. Mr. Poisson.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve Item 4.3.3A, Turner Change Order Request Number 256 for $451,660 for Phase 2B and 3A turnover allowance.
Okay, motion by Mr. Poisson. Do I have a second?
Greg Khan.
Sorry, Greg, I heard Dave first. Seconded by Dave Harden. Any discussion on the item? This would keep your building needs. Nope, okay. Ms. Pickett, we'll call a roll call vote, please.
Margot Pickett, Council Clerk, this is the roll call vote for Agenda Item 4.3.3A. Ms. Shake?
Yes.
Mr. Tavarez?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Khan?
Yes.
Mr. Poisson?
Yes.
Mr. Perillo?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Dancho?
Yes.
Mr. Pia?
Your votes are.
That is a unanimous vote.
Next item on the agenda, 4.3.3. You yourself, I think I got a lot of background from you. Thank you, sir. Mr. Poisson?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve Item 4.3.3B. It's a bid to replace the condensate tank at Johnson House in the amount of $75,900.
Motion by Mr. Poisson. Do I have a second?
Billy Perillo, second.
Billy Perillo, Councilman Perillo, thank you, sir. Discussion on the item?
Greg Khan?
Greg, go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman. To, maybe Ken, or what was the original CIP estimate for this project? And if we have surplus money now, does this go back to pay the bond or would it be used discretionary?
Mr. Chairman, I think that's more of a question for probably the first part for Renee and the second part for Mr. Timmyak.
Okay, Ms. Sarah or Mr. Timmyak, if you'd like to jump.
So this was part of last year's appropriation. We had appropriated about, I think it was $300,000 for various boiler replacements. This 75 was done with the Second Holane and Franklin, and I have $0 left from last year. So that is why we are appropriating more for this upcoming, for the next two boilers.
Okay, thank you, Renee.
Thank you. Thank you, Renee. Any other discussion on this item or a call to a vote? Nope. Okay, Ms. Pickett?
Margot Pickett, Council Clerk, roll call vote for Agenda Item 4.3.3B. Ms. Shake?
Yes.
Mr. Tavarez?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Khan?
Yes.
Mr. Poisson?
Yes.
Mr. Perillo?
Yes.
Mr. Connor? Mr. Thank you. Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Dancho?
Yes.
Mr. Pia?
Your votes are.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, 4.3.3.
Or Chairman, I apologize, could Ken do all four at the same time?
Mr., good question. Mr. Leclerc, can Ken, can Mr. Poisson bulk the remaining four together?
Yes, you can. You can have a motion to consider all four of them together and then vote on that quickly and then vote on all four of them. Yes. So motion, Mr. Poisson will make a motion to combine items 4.3.3D, E, I'm sorry, C, D, E, and F for discussion and voting purposes.
Or Greg, would you like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion for discussion purpose, voting purposes to combine 4.3.3 C, D, E, and F.
Second.
Second.
Well, their second, Mr. Excuse me, Councilman, second to that. Any discussion? Okay, we'll call that to a vote. Ms. Pickett?
Margot Pickett, Council Clerk, this is the roll call vote to combine Agenda Item 4.3.3, Item C, D, E, and F for discussion and vote. Ms. Shake?
Yes.
Mr. Tavarez?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Khan?
Yes.
Mr. Poisson?
Yeah.
Mr. Perillo?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Dancho?
Yes.
Mr. Pia?
Your votes are.
That's a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Ms. Pickett. Next motion, Mr. Poisson, if you'd like to make it, would be to approve items 4.3.3 C, D, E, and F.
Yeah, because now we just had a vote to have a vote. I was going to combine these like I usually do and just make the motion to approve Item C, D, E, and F because they all had to do with gym floor refinishing. But for once, Mr. Khan wanted to speed things up, but we ended up now having two votes instead of one.
Would you like to make the motion to vote on?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Item C, D, E, and F under 4.3.3.
Okay, motion by Mr. Poisson. Do I have a second to Mr. Poisson's motion?
Second.
Well, Councilman Tavarez, second. Any discussion on the item? Okay, we'll call to a vote. Ms. Pickett?
Margot Pickett, Council Clerk, roll call vote for Agenda Item 4.3.3 C, D, E, and F. Ms. Shake?
Yes.
Ms. Shake?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Tavarez?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Khan?
Yes.
Mr. Poisson?
Yes.
Mr. Perillo?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Dancho?
Yes.
Mr. Pia?
Your votes are.
That's a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item 4.4, Town Attorney's Report. Town Attorney Hopson.
Thank you. I have no report this evening.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda going down is item 6.2.1.
Mr. Chairman, Bill O'Brien?
Yes, sir.
I move that we pass 6.2-1, Resolution Adopting Town of Stratford Complete Streets Policy.
Motion by Mr. O'Brien. Do I have a second to this?
Greg Khan?
Seconded by Greg. Any discussion on the item?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. O'Brien, go ahead.
We all received some very good information about this, but just for the general public that may be listening, I'd like to just point out some of the highlights. The purpose of the complete streets policy is to accommodate a wide range of road users by creating a road network that meets the needs of individuals utilizing a variety of transportation modes and revitalize the Stratford Center. By incorporating complete streets as a guide, the Town of Stratford will advance its efforts to provide safety and accessibility for all the users of our roadways, trails, and transit systems, including pedestrians, bicyclist, transit riders, motorists, commercial vehicles, and emergency vehicles for people of all ages and all abilities. The town was able to secure $450,000 from State Office of Policy and Management to prepare preliminary designs for the implementation of Phase 1. Additionally, $2.5 million was appropriated by State DOT for implementation through local transportation capital improvement program, and the town received an official commitment to fund letter from State DOT in March 2020, and officially adopted Town Resolution of the Complete Streets Policy will further enhance the town's chances of securing additional state and federal grants with emphasis on grants.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Any other discussion on the item?
Chris, it's Greg Khan.
Yep, Greg.
You know, large projects like this do have a long timeline. I believe planning and zoning approved complete streets maybe upwards to two, maybe three years ago. But as Bill just presented, you know, the monies just came in in March of 2020. This is a fantastic project. I want to thank the council for bringing it forward as a resolution, and I have a question for Chris Pia, or excuse me, Chris Timmyak.
You may.
Yes, Chris, is the, all this, the output of the charrettes, those schematics that we chaired in our opponent, are they available on the town website?
I don't know if they are. I believe they are available at locations. If they're not, we'll make sure we get them up on the website. I can ask Jay Hibansky or Sir Smith if they're, they're up and get back to you on that.
Did he follow up?
Yeah.
Any other discussion on the item? Okay, Ms. Pickett, we'll call for a vote, please.
Margot Pickett, Council Clerk, roll call vote for Agenda Item 6.2.1. Ms. Shake?
Yes.
Mr. Tavarez?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Khan?
Yes.
Mr. Poisson?
Yes.
Mr. Perillo?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Dancho?
Yes.
Mr. Pia?
Your votes are.
A unanimous vote.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item 7.1. I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the recommendations of the planning and commissions for additional lighting at Banel High School.
Okay, motion by Mr. Councilman Perillo. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second, Bill O'Brien.
Seconded by Councilman O'Brien. Any discussion on this? This came, point of reference came from planning with a favorable recommendation.
Greg?
Greg, go ahead.
Is this for the concession stand, the turf field, or is this other lighting that they were considering?
This is for the baseball field.
And that's likely part of the CIP we just approved?
Yes, it is.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, good.
Any other questions on this? Okay, hearing none. Ms. Pickett, we'll call for a vote, please.
Margot Pickett, Council Clerk, this is the roll call vote for Agenda Item 7.1. Ms. Shake?
Yes.
Mr. Tavarez?
Yes.
Mr. Harden? Mr. Khan?
Yes.
Mr. Poisson?
Yes.
Mr. Perillo?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Dancho?
Yes.
Mr. Pia?
Your votes are.
That is a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Margot. Next item on the agenda is under 7.2.1, the Water and Harbor Front Management Commission, two items for renewal, Mr. Who would like to entertain a motion, excuse me?
Mr. Chairman, this is Jim Connor. I'd like to make a motion to resolve that Scott Horner of Homestead Avenue B and is hereby appointed a member of the Waterfront Harbor Management Commission with a term that expires May 31, 2025.
Okay, most, do you want to combine the two items, the A and B, Mr. Connor?
Yeah, and the second one is resolve that Patrick Cribbin of Butternut Lane B and is hereby reappointed a member of the Waterfront Harbor Management Commission with a term that expires May 31, 2025.
Thank you, sir. Second to that?
Second by Dave Harden.
Any discussion on the items?
Greg, you have something? Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
The often, it's a general question about all, when all appointments are going to be terminated. So I think my question is to Mr. Timmyak, are the committee members and commission members and the end date of their appointments, are they all up to date on the town website?
I don't know. I have to, I'll have to check on that. I am not, I'm not up to date on, updating the website right now. But I'll look into that and we'll get back to you.
We'll find out, Greg.
Thank you.
Okay, and these, just Greg, just on the, on this, and I'm speaking of A and B alone, these two gentlemen reached out to me in, in advance, and they knew their term was coming up, and they've been on for years. They're, they're great assets to the, to the Water Harbor Front. They, they put in yeoman's work. So they're great volunteers. So that's, that's why we put it on. It's just because they had reached out knowing their term was coming up and we just, you know, that's, that's where it came from. So.
And Chris, I, I know that Waterfront Commission's done an awesome job representing Stratford, and I thank you for letting me ask a more general question.
No problem, no problem. Any other discussion on the item? Okay, so we're going to vote on item 7.2.1A and B as motion was made by Mr. Connor and seconded by, I believe it's Mr. Harden.
Mr. Harden.
Okay, thank you.
Margot Pickett, Council Clerk, roll call vote for Agenda Item 7.2.1A and B. Ms. Shake?
Yes.
Mr. Tavarez?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Khan?
Yes.
Mr. Poisson?
Yes.
Mr. Perillo?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Good job tonight, Margot. Thank you, and I vote yes.
Thank you, Phil. Ms. Dancho?
Yes.
Mr. Pia?
Your votes are.
That is a unanimous vote.
Thank you. With that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Greg Khan, motion to adjourn.
Motion by Greg, second by Mr. Poisson.
Greg Harden.
Mr. Poisson, I call in a second. Sorry, Dave, he beat you. Hi.
Hi.
Thank you all.